Here.
Supervisor Brown.
Here.
Supervisor Kroski.
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Here.
Supervisor McCowen.
Here.
I would like to invite Carmel Angelo to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item 5A, Election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2018, I would like to invite a nomination, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I nominate inelect Supervisor Dan Hamburg as Chair and Supervisor George Jan Kroski as Vice Chair of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors for the 2018 calendar year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion to the motion?
I have one comment. We follow a system of rotation and I always like to note that the order in which we go is District 5, 3, 1, 4, 2. So if everyone's clear on that, I don't know why, I just am fascinated by that.
Is there any public, is there any public comment to the item? Seeing none, we'll vote, please.
By the button?
By the button.
By the button.
Motion carries unanimous. Supervisor Hamburg is now Chairman and leading the meeting.
Thank you very much, and it's an honor to be the Chair of the Board. It is a rotating position, but nonetheless, it always feels a little bit special to be in the role of Chair. This is my third opportunity, and I hope I've learned something from my first two, and this will be my best run at it. But it's also kind of an honor in a way to be doing this on my last year serving on the Board of Supervisors, my 12th year, and looking forward to serving as your Chair for this final year on the Board. So, moving along, Agenda Item Number 3 is Public Expression, which is for items that are not on our regular agenda, and I believe we have some speaker cards. I think everybody's, or most of you are probably familiar, that we take no more than 10 minutes total on items that are not on the agenda. So I will call people as they submitted their speaker forms, and we'll start with Michelle Bertnik. Does Miss pronounce it? Michelle, are you here? Thank you.
There's a couple things that I just want to address, one of them being that I would like some kind of zoning change or a way in which people in Upland Residential or other zones be able to manufacture concentrates using non-volatile substances. For instance, I used to enjoy making rosin, and it, you just take plant material, you put it in a machine that's connected to a compressor, I'm all solar power, and it smashes the plant material, and out comes the rosin, and it doesn't use any substances at all to use. I'm using all solar power, it doesn't harm the environment at all, causes very little waste, which is, some of it's also compostable, and I would really like to be able to continue making that, since I'm already going through the permitting and getting permits for using a, producing cannabis. So, and then also, I would like to say that I'm here to support Old Kai, who was detained and arrested and had his product taken from him, from CHP and the local Sheriff's Office, and I just feel that if we are all trying so hard to conform to the new policies and law, I think that our law enforcement should be under the same stress, and what happens to a cultivator or distributor affects all of us out here trying to go through this permitting process. It's stressful enough, we thought we were going to have a leg to stand on at this point, and then something like this happens, and it just really takes away a lot of your enthusiasm and trying to stay positive through this whole thing. I also know that there's more people than just Old Kai that this has happened to. I think it would be interesting to find out how many people have been having their products confiscated recently, and a way that maybe we can educate local law enforcement better into what the rules and regulations are, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bertnik. Our next speaker is Patrick Sullivan, and Patrick Sullivan is followed by Charles Sargenti. Just to be right. Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan, are you here?
I don't think he's here.
Okay, I did not see Mr. Sullivan. Would Mr. Sargenti please take the mic? And Mr. Sargenti will be followed by, I think, a Ms. Ramirez.
Charles Sargenti, I'm from Covelo. Well, we all know what happened last Friday to Old Kai Distribution's van and drivers transporting medical marijuana from Covelo. The CHP is maintaining that transport of cannabis prior to January was illegal, and this is according to the Ukiah Press Democrat. The same paper reports that this statement or position by the CHP is directly contradicted by a spokesperson for the State Bureau of Cannabis Control, who states that medical marijuana businesses with local licenses and permits can operate before January. Although the matter may seem moot now that we're in 2018, it is by no means moot for the cultivators who supplied the product and Old Kai Distribution who transported it, and should not be met with silence from the Board. Therefore, I urge the Board to express in a manner as strongly as possible your dismay and disappointment in regard to this incident. I realize you can't control the CHP or the Sheriff's Office, but there should be no uncertainty about where you stand. Secondly, I think it is clearly time to address the problem of the disconnect between law enforcement and the regulatory efforts by the county to encourage cannabis cultivators to come forward into compliance. This disconnect is evidenced not only by the present instance, but others in the past, and most notably the incident in Boonville a few months back. Ideally, this would be a matter for an advisory board to take up, but since there is no advisory board, an additional working group focusing on law enforcement issues should be created forthwith. Notwithstanding the fact that we are at the dawn of a new regulatory era for cannabis, there is no reason to believe that this disconnect is going to disappear anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Followed by Matthew Mandelker.
Hello, Monique Ramirez, I'm also from Covelo. I'm here today for a few reasons. The first is to express my disappointment with how our local law enforcement has treated a license permitted legal business in our county before the holidays, referencing the Old Kai Company. I'm not sure what you guys can do as a Board, but I'm hoping that by bringing this to your attention that you guys could write a letter to the law enforcement and the DA to help find a resolution and return the product back and drop any charges against the business. The job of the Sheriff and the police is to uphold the law, and if the entity in question was in fact doing so, this needs to be corrected. Otherwise, our county suffers. That product would have eventually made its way into the legal marketplace, and that would have generated tax revenue for the county. The integrity of the cannabis ordinance that you guys all worked so hard on is at stake, and I hope that there is something you can do. I believe that what we should do is support the enactment of adding another working group to the list, one on law enforcement specifically, and I also would like to request that CEO Carmel Angelo, please add the Transferability Working Group to the schedule, as that group has not even met once since the formation of all the working groups were formed, and I don't want to see it get held on the back burner for much longer. It needs to come forward to the front of the stove as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Mandelker, followed by Joe Rogaway.
I'm Matthew Mandelker, co-founder of Old Kai Logistics, resident of Ukiah. I live up in Regina Heights with my wife, who's a nurse practitioner at the Little Lake Health Center in Willets. My daughter was born here. I say these things to underscore the fact that for too long, this industry has been treated as if it is outside the social, civic, legal, and economic fabric of this community, and we do not. And as we move forward, dealing with this current matter, I would like to see support from the Board as we move forward. It's our understanding that the product has been destroyed, which is an outrage, just unfathomable in 2018 that we're dealing with this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you for your comments. Joe Rogaway, followed by Ron Edwards.
My name is Joe Rogaway. I'm an attorney here representing Old Kai, and by extension, the legal cannabis industry operators in Mendocino County. I'm speaking to you because my client's vehicle was stopped and its products were seized by law enforcement on December 22nd, just before the Christmas weekend. At the time of the stop, Old Kai was in possession of a valid license issued by the County of Mendocino. It was issued and effective as of December 19th, 2017. It was presented to law enforcement at the scene of the stop. At the scene of the stop, it wasn't just CHP, it was also the task force, as well as the Sheriff's Office. During the course of the stop, I attempted to intervene. I contacted both the Sheriff's Office and CHP, and was rebuffed. In fact, the Sheriff's Office told me at the time that there was no one from the Sheriff's Office who was assisting at the stop when the information that I had at the time was otherwise. The issue here is not just relevant to Old Kai, and of course, there has been a grave injustice perpetrated upon them because of not just the citation of the driver and the passenger for unlawful transportation, possession, for sale, which is the exact category of activities that are licensed by you, the County of Mendocino. Licensed by the county, stopped by law enforcement, arrested, incarcerated, potentially, based on the charges of unlawful possession and transportation. But this is a broader issue as relates to any operator here in the county that wants to comply with your ordinance. Any operator here in the county that has listened to you, that has been present, that has participated, that has come out of the shadows in order to not just express their support for the industry, but to put themselves at risk, to put their families at risk, their livelihoods at risk, and it is the livelihoods of farmers in Round Valley whose products were seized that is at issue here. When CHP effectuated that arrest, they had to believe that there was probable cause to believe that a crime had occurred. That is not possible, based on the state of the law, given that they presented law enforcement at the time with the license issued by you. Keep in mind that underlying this license is the duly enacted ordinance from you, the Board of Supervisors, and if you review that ordinance and the code provisions in Section, Subsection Point 010, what you will see is the definition of the facilities operator, which is an operator who is permitted to engage amongst other things in lawful cannabis distribution.
Mr. Rogaway, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
What is at issue here, and what's important, is that from what I hear from a lot of operators in Mendocino County is, why bother? Why should I participate in the system? Why should I put myself at risk, put myself in jeopardy? Because if this is what happens to Old Kai, what will happen to me? So what we're asking from the Board of Supervisors is a resolution, not just in support of the program, but in support of Old Kai. Thank you very much.
I have a question, Speaker.
Okay.
Just, has, have you spoken to, or someone from your organization spoken to, the Sheriff?
We have reached out to the Sheriff, but the responses came back through County Council.
Okay. Because I'm surprised he's often at our Board meetings, I'm surprised he's not here this morning.
Okay, well, thank you. This is not on the agenda.
And I'd welcome the opportunity.
I don't know why he is not here, but he's not.
Thank you.
Okay. Did Patrick Sullivan return?
I'm right here.
Okay, would you like to?
I would, if you please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing me. My name is Patrick Sullivan. I'm Vice President of SEIU 1021, and I'm reading a statement by Court Peterson. He unfortunately couldn't be here today because he was visiting family, so I'm gonna go ahead and read that. "My name is Court Peterson. I have been a social worker with Mendocino County for 14 years and an employee for just over 19. After recent market salary studies and reclassification actions completed by County HR, incremental raises were provided to custodial staff, some emergency response personnel, and most recently to social workers to bring them closer to parity with counties having similar demographics."
Mr. Sullivan, I believe this item is on the agenda.
Oh, I had it marked as being on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I thought you were calling me.
Okay. Well, would you like to, would you like to speak under the actual Agenda Item?
That's fine. Yeah, I'm happy to come back.
We could let you do that. Okay, thank you very much. We will hold it for them. Okay, Joshua Artman, followed by Ron Edwards. You know, I think I messed that up. I think it's actually Ron Edwards, followed by Casey O'Neil.
Good morning, Board. Once again, I think this is the third time we are here where your authority has been undermined, and again, there's no one from law enforcement here. I am really confused and did some research and looking, I know that this is a general law county, and trying to figure out the structure of how this county works. The closest I could come is that the citizens of the county, then the Board of Supervisors, and everything else falls below that. And this incident with Old Kai is an embarrassment to this county. This is the third time it's happened, and particularly, and I hate to address an individual, but when our County Council, who has been at every one of these meetings where we have discussed the ordinance inside and out for the past two years, cannot make a comment about what is going on and to intervene, I don't know where our structure flows. Who do we have that when the situation comes up can get a phone call and say, yes, they are in compliance? And for our county sheriff to not reach out and understand that and not participate in this, particularly, I know there's a mutual aid, but I did not see that this was a armed situation, something that required our sheriff and task force to be involved. They should have said, we're sorry, they are perfectly legal and compliant with this county, and I think that we need an answer. We cannot just let this go and flow. There needs to be a statement from County Council, there needs to be a statement from the sheriff, there needs to be a statement from the district attorney, and you, the Board, for members of this county to understand what is going on, because this is not the first time. This is the third time I have been here to address a situation like this where you have given direction and law enforcement of some type has not followed that. So where does your ordinance stand? Where's your power? I don't understand how this structure works. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm just looking through these speaker forms, and you know, obviously, this Old Kai situation has brought up a lot of, lot of concern, you know, even a lot of anger. I do want to try, in my first moments as Chair this year, to stick to our procedure, which is 10 minutes for items that are not on the agenda, so I'm not going to hold to that really firmly, but I'm going to ask you, those of you who are still going to speak on this item, if you would please not cover the same ground that's already been covered. I think the Board realizes that this is a very serious situation which needs to be addressed. It's not on our agenda today, so we're not able to address it fully, but it's not something that any of us are unaware of, or anything that any of us don't think needs attention. So I want to assure people of that, and I want to ask you to please try to respect our rules of procedure, which again, are 10 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. I know we've already gone over that, so if this is an item you want to speak to, if you could just get up and give your name and say you support what previous speakers have said, that would really help us to stay on track this morning. Okay, with that, I will call Casey O'Neil to the microphone, followed by Lucas Seymour. And again, I'd ask you to please try not to be repetitious, and if you want to support previous speakers, please do so.
Good morning, Casey O'Neil, local farmer, Vice Chair, California Growers Association. Definitely would convey support for all previous speakers and those to come regarding the issue with Old Kai. Would definitely like to also indicate support for the working group process and to suggest that we either set up a separate working group or look through the lens of making permit processes more functional and more streamlined for small farms through each of the working groups. I think this is something that we're going to continue to see, you know, I've spent a lot of time as a, as a community advocate, supporting and trying to create a process that works for the smallest operators, and at this point, there's a lot of people who feel like it's a failure. So we've got a ways to go. I definitely, you know, there's been a lot of work done on this, and I don't in any way, shape, or form mean to denigrate the process that has happened thus far, just to note that there is still work to be done. We applaud the county for moving forward with the ag exempt structures for cannabis. That's a huge step in the right direction that we're very appreciative of. Likewise, with the regulations for portable toilets, very appreciative there, and I have communicated these things in a letter as well today, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Casey. Lucas Seymour, please, come to the mic, followed by Brandon Wheeler.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lucas Seymour. I'm the other co-founder of Old Kai Logistics. I've spent a few years speaking within the county and throughout the state. Usually when I speak, I speak on the importance of compliance, the importance of joining this newly created, regulated market. Right now, because of what happened, I'm getting a lot of phone calls. Every single day, I get phone calls from cultivators and manufacturers who are saying, this is why I didn't want to join the regulated market. For better or worse, the ordinance that we've created is your and our ordinance. It's our, it's the most important thing, and it doesn't matter that this happened to Old Kai or any other entity out there that it could have happened to. Right now, we're, we have a chance to either make this work or have it fall apart, and all of us in this room have to do that together. I feel, I feel incredibly lucky that we have the support of not only our employees, but the people in the, in the county, and I think we all owe it to ourselves to figure out what went wrong. I understand, I really do understand that a mistake was made, that CHP didn't understand the documentation they were looking at. I do. I get it. There's going to be mistakes that are made, but if in fact that it was destroyed before any sort of due process could come to fruition, that's a huge problem. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brandon Wheeler, followed by Leslie Hines.
Brandon Wheeler, owner of Lee's Farms. I just wanted to say I support the comments in regards to Old Kai that the other speakers have made. I also wanted to very briefly touch on the rangeland zoning error that has come up with the cannabis permit process, and please remind the Board that if this is truly an error to resolve this quickly, it is holding up a lot of people's permits. There's been a lot of really good progress made recently with building use, particularly the ag exempt. We really appreciate the Board in building and planning, working on this, but this is going to be a continued issue. There's still a lot of work to be done, and I would please ask the Board that they give strong direction to building and planning services to allow flexibility with building and planning. We need workable solutions for existing buildings, you know, for existing cultivators, and I am also concerned that the Class K ordinance may be gutted with some of these upcoming proposed changes, and this ties not in just to the cannabis ordinance, but the whole community. We have a major housing crisis in this community, and we really need that Class K ordinance to stay intact and to be flexible and to allow us to have affordable, accessible housing in this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Leslie Hines, followed by Pamela Dorsey.
Good morning, I'm Leslie Hines. I'm a proud member of the Round Valley Growers Association. We're 50-plus members strong. My heart just basically sank when I heard about the product being destroyed. I didn't know that. We're not only just pot growers, we're farmers, we have livestock, poultry, we love and support our community, we grow agriculture. I live on a 160-acre farm. We've been there for decades. We've spent so much money, all of us, on coming above board with these permits, and a lot of us, it was our savings, and so, these people that have lost their product, I don't know what they're going to do, but I am very sorry that that happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Pamela Dorsey, followed by Montana Pogba.
Good morning, I'm Pamela Dorsey, I'm from Reda Valley. Totally off-subject, sorry, but it's Port Al U. I'm a fire victim. I was hurt in the fire. I lost everything, including my mom, and I'm here to ask you to please look at the implications of assigning an ordinance to have sprinklers put in all of our homes as if that's going to prevent a fire from burning down my home, because it's not, because the electricity is going to go out. There's going to be nothing to pump the water to be able to provide fire from spreading in our home. That's just one more cost to us that we can't afford. And the other thing I want to say is, I've been to all the town meetings, some of you were there, some of you were not there, but during those town meetings, and I have it on record, they were supposed to waive all the fees. I also now know that that's not true, that people are being, not only having to pay building fees for something that we have to rebuild, that we had no control over, but now they're also raising the fees, and I think that is just immorally wrong, because we are suffering out there. We are living in substandard ways. I lost 58 animals. It's just wrong, and so I want you guys to be able to please think about what you're passing before you make us live by those standards, because if you haven't been affected, you have no idea what this has been like, and you know, live with it. Live with night terrors, live with all that, and then put all that stuff on top of us and make us jump through more hoops to try to build, rebuild our home. I just paid off my home last year, spent my whole life doing that. For what? Now I have to build a house that's half the size, half of what I had, because everything is so expensive, and now you're slapping more fees and sprinklers. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Montana Pogba, followed by Brett Cooperreiter.
Good morning, and Happy New Year. Can't be any worse than the last year, I hope. I stand in solidarity with everyone who's spoken so far. My feelings are that there's a disconnect, and it goes beyond just Mendocino County. The disconnect comes from cognitive dissonance. What am I talking about? I'm talking about a pledge of allegiance to a piece of cloth that happens to be three-colored. That's the most absurd thing I've ever heard, pledging allegiance to a police piece of cloth. Why is that absurd? Because no one knows what that piece of cloth stands for. They say, "To the Republic for which it stands." No, that flag stands for the Constitution of the United States. There are actual words, rational words, that that flag stands for. Unfortunately, we're not telling that to our students, or giving them some idea that a flag has all the answers. My country, right or wrong, came out of that. We don't believe that. We want the Constitution to be upheld. I suggest, I pledge allegiance to the Constitutions of the United States and the State of California for which our flag stands. One nation, under our Creator, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That solves the religious problem, gets back to the Creator that our founding fathers wrote about in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, no longer favors one particular religion, and it focuses specifically on the constitutions that you, each one of you who work for the state, local, or national government, take, as did I as an attorney. I promise to support, defend, and protect the Constitutions of the United States and the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. the United States and the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. If you took that oath without knowing what was in those documents, you just became a traitor. How can you support, protect, and defend something if you don't know what's in it? Let's begin that education process with our kids saluting and pledging allegiance to the constitutions, not just a flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padva. Brett Cooperreider, be followed by Josh Artman.
Hello, Brett Cooperreider, local farmer. I just want to support everybody who's spoken today already, but also just to let you know that for me, it is extremely important for us as cannabis farmers to be able to deal with local businesses and businesses like Old Kai that can help small farmers. I'll just leave it at that, but it's extremely important to me as a farmer to be able to work with local businesses and support my local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Artman. And Mr. Artman will be followed by Mark Thies.
Hi, my name's Josh Artman, and I live in Covelo. Most of that product was mine. I run a farm called Blue Nose Botanicals and a platform called Big Green Exchange, which helps licensees to meet. I'm a member of the Round Valley Growers Association. I moved to Covelo 10 years ago with my family. I was a federal employee. I worked for the U.S. Geological Survey. My wife was in the military. We grew up, we moved here to grow cannabis. I was one of the first members to sign up for the 931 program. I've signed up for everything. I just walked past the tax collector. I don't know how many times I've been in there paying them money. I don't know what to tell my family. I mean, we believed in you. We believed that these regulations were going to be meaningful and that signing up for them would amount to something, that, you know, there would be smart enforcement. We understand that mistakes can be made, but there has to be, what amazed me really about this process is I've been completely in the dark. Like, nobody can tell me anything. There's no transparency. There's no accountability. A preservation was letter. We don't even know where the product is or if it still exists. It just, you know, there has to be some, you know, due process here, just so farmers want to keep signing up for this. I mean, and I've paid a whole lot of money. I know most of the friends I know aren't sure if this is going to pencil out for them, because the costs are extraordinary. And, you know, the county has handicapped us somewhat when Lake County's doing an acre and Humboldt's doing an acre, and then all the zoning restrictions in Covelo. And it's all ag land or in the mountains. So if you don't allow any of these licensees on ag land, it really divorces us from having the freedom to be able to succeed. So, you know, I'm thinking more about, you know, everybody else, and I just want to offer my support and, you know, know where my shit's at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. The last speaker is Art Thies. Mark Thies? Mark?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Please come forward.
I came just to talk about, you know, in regards to this situation that happened with Old Kai. And, excuse me, it's very, very unfortunate that this happened, but at the same time, it's almost necessary in a way to create, it's kind of, for me, it's kind of, if you would help us create a working group, that we could work with law enforcement and have a working group that is actually could, you know, this unfortunate circumstance could be, create something that's really much needed. It's kind of like the chain finding the weak link, you know, to have a seamless approach so that we can communicate and work and guide each other with law enforcement. And like, you know, just to reiterate, it's a very unfortunate circumstance, but with your help and helping us create a working group, we can actually turn this around into something very positive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thies. And are there any other comments under public expression? Mr. Howard?
Good morning, Lord. Happy New Year. Lee Howard, North Coast Builders Exchange. I'm not here on cannabis, but I hear what you're dealing with. You've had one speaker that spoke to the ravages that have occurred out in Redwood Valley. At least some of you have received some pictures over the last week regarding the fire and the fire issues. I want you to hear loud and clear that there is lien notices being sent to your fire victims that have had cleanup, to pay for the cleanup of these things. I had the opportunity last Friday, Thursday, I believe, to travel the fire area with Tammy Ross Chandler. We met with, I believe, six different people out there in the fire thing. We actually saw a bill for $14,000 for fire cleanup that should never have gone. And Tammy was actually, and I was actually told to people, "Do not pay this bill." It needs to be loud and clear that don't let the contractor rake us like this. A couple of the other things that are critical at this point in time, the pictures I sent you was for the cleanup. Somebody has decided that everything needs to be strawed, including the inside of the perimeter foundations. That is going to cost your constituents big bucks to clean up. We've already had one case where there wasn't straw on the ground. The county said, "No, we can't issue a building permit to you until you straw this and waddle it." Unacceptable. We're talking thousands of dollars. The simple fact is that you have a second letter that was handed to you today from a person in Potter Valley. Met with her on Friday. Unacceptable. She has a burned-down barn. She's never left the property. She's been out there all the time. And somebody came on her property and cleaned up the household hazardous waste. Also took two 55-gallon drums of fuel for her tractor. And broke the barrel pump that was needed to pump the fuel. Unacceptable. I would hope that somebody in the county goes and buys a couple new barrels, fills it with diesel, and takes it back to the lady so she can take care of her place. She's working diligently to meet the goals that you've set. She got noticed, a legal notice from the building department, saying she was in violation. These are only a part of it. You have done some really good stuff out there. Don't let it stop here. They need some help out there, and they need it badly now. And the first one needs to be is stop the straying of all these household foundation areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, just hold on just one second. I just want to check with the CEO. I believe that notices did go out to people instructing them that they did not, that they were not obligated to pay those lien amounts. Is that true?
Chair Hamburg, I will check on that if the notices actually went out. But what I would like to say is that this is a very similar circumstance that happened in Lake County as well. But we know that there is not an expectation for our fire survivors to actually pay those bills. It's more of a process for the companies. And I think that it's understandable why people are concerned about this. You know, nobody wants to get this lien statement. But we actually have a meeting set on Friday with the CalOES administrator and also FEMA administrator to discuss all the issues that we're currently dealing with and also more long-term recovery. And so, I can certainly report back to this board. But I do not believe that there is any expectation that the fire survivors are to pay those bills.
Right.
So, I want to be certain with that, though it doesn't negate the fact that people are receiving these, and certainly that it is upsetting. I'm also hoping that Mr. Howard will take myself and CalOES and FEMA on another tour on Friday morning, and I hope that that's possible.
Okay. With that, I would like to recognize Supervisor Brown.
Yes, Mr. Howard talked about letter. Oh, it's on, okay, it's refreshed then? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the public expression, and I want people to know that, again, that we take these comments with great seriousness, and we realize there is a lot of work to be done in more than one of these areas, but particularly the area that brought a lot of people here today. We're all quite concerned and intend to address the matter. Okay, moving on then, if I may, to Agenda Item 5B, which is discussion and possible action, including adoption of a resolution adopting the Board of Supervisors' rules of procedure. The Executive Office is the sponsor of this item. And I will ask the CEO to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. Though, I do believe that we have a consent calendar. I don't know if you'd like to go back to that or if you'd like to do this item first.
Oh, my first big gaffe of the morning.
That's okay. Well, I'm sure there'll be many more this year. It's okay.
Well, thank you for that vote of confidence, CEO Angelo. Just read right through that consent calendar. I decided it was also minor that we just dispensed with it. I would like to then ask the clerk if we have established proper notice for the consent calendar.
Yes, proper notice has been established.
And I would like to ask any board members who would like to identify items for separate consideration. Supervisor McCowen?
I move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor McCowen, a second by Supervisor Brown. With that, I will ask that board members vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5B regarding the Board of Supervisors' rules of procedure. And I will refer back to the CEO.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. As our process is, the first meeting, the organizational meeting of every year, we review the board's rules of procedure just to see if there are any changes that are either requested by the individual board members, the board in total, or county administration. And so, what you have here are the rules of procedure. At this time, we do not have any recommendations for any changes, and leave it open to hear if the individual board members have any concerns about the rules or would like any changes or edits made.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. I move to adopt resolution adopting the board's rules of procedure as presented, and authorize the chair to sign the same.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Brown, a second by Supervisor Kroski. With that, I will ask board members to please vote by the button. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item-
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry. Mistake number two.
Don't beat yourself up.
I'm counting. I'm just keeping my little scratch sheet here. Agenda Item 5C is a discussion and possible adoption of a resolution regarding board standing committees for 2018. Again, the Executive Office is the sponsor.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg.
Yes, please.
Again, with the organizational meeting, we take a look at the standing committees, and it's the board's opportunity to appoint the standing committee members. And of course, at one time, we had four standing committees. We've brought those down to two, which is the Public Health, Safety, and Resources, and then General Government. And there was a discussion, I believe, either at the last board meeting or the one before, where we talked about standing committees versus ad-hocs and what this board really wanted to do. And in the past, of course, this past year, we know that you determined who would be sitting on the standing committees, and then we also enacted the standing committees. In the past, this board and this chair has chosen the members of the standing committees, and then we've had that and have only convened those standing committees as needed. And then, of course, we've had times over the years where we've had ad-hocs and no standing committees. And during those times, that really was because of staffing issues that we did not reconvene the standing committees. So at this point in time, certainly, the board will either appoint the standing committees or don't make those appointments. But my recommendation would be to go ahead and appoint those standing committees, and then determine if you would like to convene them this year or not. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open this up for board discussion. I just want to mention that when I was taking all of the committee assignments that board members requested, I neglected to fill in the blanks for the Public Health, Safety, and Resource Committee and the General Government Committee. My assumption, however, is that those committees would continue to be in existence, and we would refer to them as we felt was necessary. We would continue to use ad hoc committees as we felt those were more appropriate, but would keep the general government, or, excuse me, the standing committees operative. And my thought was that I would be replaced on the Public Health, Safety, and Resources Committee by Supervisor Kroski, and that Supervisor McCowen would chair that committee. The General Government Committee would stay as it has been. I'm not sure who was the chair of that committee. Was that Supervisor Brown? You know, we could leave that the same, or we could switch it over to Supervisor Jertie, but that Brown and Jertie would continue to be the General Government Committee. Obviously, they worked together very, very well last year, and I don't see a reason to change that. I enjoyed working on the Public Health, Safety, and Resource Committee with Supervisor McCowen, but as chair, I would step back and ask Supervisor Kroski to take that position. So with that, Supervisor Jertie.
I support where you're going with this. I agree with the idea of the standing committees. I think they're helpful. They do play a role. And I like the outline that's in the agenda for the schedule and for the appointments as described.
Okay, any other board comment? I don't see any. Is there any public comment on the issue of the standing committees? Okay. If not, I will invite a motion. We have a motion by Supervisor-
Well, the resolution that's in our packet, looks like it just establishes the committees. I'm not sure that it's actually establishing who's the composition or the schedule.
But it does say, "Appoint standing committee members," and you can mention it in the actual motion itself.
Yeah, go ahead and embellish, as you will.
So, I move to appoint Supervisors McCowen and Kroski to the Public Health, Safety, I'm not sure the full name of it, Committee.
Resources.
Resource Committee, and Supervisor McCowen as chair, and appoint Supervisor Brown as chair of the General Government Committee, and myself as member, with the schedule included in the agenda summary as well as the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
And the motion would include to adopt the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint the standing committees as described in the motion. Please vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. Item 5D is the discussion and possible action, including adoption of a 2018 Board of Supervisors' master meeting calendar. And again, I'll turn it over to the CEO.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. This is our master meeting calendar in draft that we have put together for 2018. And I just want to say that if you look at 2017's calendar that was adopted by this board, and then you look at the meetings that we had, we had five meetings in October, we had five meetings in August, we had additional meetings almost every month. So, we are starting with our formal calendar. This is what we usually put together, as this board knows. And again, we have- board knows, and again, we have, this board has the ability to add meetings as needed. But this is our recommended calendar for this coming year, and you can see that what we're trying to do, as usual, which is to have a meeting every other week, and we do know, and staff is well aware, and has been very supportive of adding all the meetings that this board has added. So if, I don't know if there are any questions on this calendar at this time.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. Yes, my comment is, I cannot be here for the October 2nd meeting. I know that, I have a very important family obligation in Southern California.
Are you, Chair Hamburg, Supervisor Brown, are you requesting that we change the date, or you're just announcing that you're not able to be here?
I'm announcing I can't make it if we don't change the date, but it's whatever is up to the board, I will be absent.
Okay.
Yes, Supervisor McCowen, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a question regarding June budget hearings. There is only one meeting that has the dashed line around it, we've got, it looks like solid black around the day before and after, so I wonder what the intention is there. Are the budget hearings to be scheduled for the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, or only the Fifth?
Thank you very much, Supervisor McCowen. This is actually the preference of the board, that there are times that we do Monday, there have been years that we've done Monday, Tuesday, years that we've done Tuesday, Wednesday. It has been many years that we have done three days of budget hearings. So I would ask this board, and thank you for bringing that up, that do, would you prefer doing the budget hearings the Fifth and the Sixth, or the Fourth and the Fifth?
And if I may continue, I would say the Fifth and the Sixth, and I'll note, too, unless I'm looking at this incorrectly, our practice the last couple of years has been to have, frequently to have meetings on a Monday and a Tuesday, both of the same week, and other than the possibility that you've raised for June, if I'm looking at this correctly, all of our regular meetings would be on a Tuesday.
And that's correct, Supervisor McCowen?
And I think that's actually a good practice, and probably helps the public follow what we're doing better. And so again, I would say for June, we should meet on the Fifth and Sixth for budget, because I'm anticipating the Fourth would be Local Agency Formation Commission and Mendocino Council of Governments.
I think it's a good suggestion, and as far as how that's marked on the calendar, perhaps we should continue our little dashed red around the Sixth.
I guess, oh, go ahead, yes. Well, as to Supervisor Brown's announcement, if we change the date, I think it's beneficial generally for staff to have a meeting and then skip a week and have a meeting, I think it helps with the flow of their work. Ideally, we would have all members present at all meetings, but, you know, if we do change that, potentially, we're putting more work on staff.
Yeah, the only thing that occurs to me is, you know, as chair and working with the Executive Office, we can try to keep items that are particularly dear to Supervisor Brown's heart, although we know that's a very wide swath of issues, but, you know, I don't know if we could lighten that agenda a little, or at least be cognizant, and I appreciate the forewarning, at least be cognizant of your absence, and how we could best deal with not having you on the dais that day. Unfortunately, we don't have an alternate who can come and sit in your seats. Okay, any other comments? Yeah, Supervisor Kroski?
Thank you, Chair. Just if we're doing forewarnings, the 24th of July, I will be out of country that week, so that one I won't be present on.
So similarly, we will try to be cognizant of that in setting the agenda items for that day. Any other board comments? Okay, Supervisor McCowen?
And I do agree with the chair that the scheduling of items can be adjusted to accommodate supervisors, so that, you know, critical issues, and certainly anything that would directly affect their main areas of interest or district-
District.
-could, you know, be scheduled at different times. That said, I would move approval of the recommended action, noting that the budget hearings in June would be shown as Tuesday the 5th and Wednesday the 6th.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second to approve the master meeting calendar, Supervisor Jertie? Do you have any comments by board members? Okay, I think I need to invite public comment. I will invite public comment, anyone care to comment on the calendar? Okay, if not, I'll ask, did we vote by the button? Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Almost blew it again. Okay, with that, the board will take a five-minute recess.
You find out who's really in charge.
All right, we'll be back in session at approximately eight minutes after 10 o'clock. And going on to Item Number 5E, which is the Discussion and Possible Approval of Board's Special Assignments and Appointments, as recommended by the Chair of the Board. And if you'll look on your special assignment sheet, you will see that there have been some recommendations which are made based on the requests that I received from each of you, and these are my suggestions, and of course, they're open to comment, they're open to change. So let's have at it. Supervisor Jertie?
I support the recommended list, at least all I know is every committee I requested I'm on, so, but I don't see the North Coast Resource Partnership, and I don't know if that's a separate-
I think that's, oh, it is there?
Where is it?
If you look down right under MTA.
Oh, North Coast Resource Partnership-
Oh, there it is, yeah, okay.
McCowen, Brown, with you as the alternate.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes, Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And typically, we do appoint alternates for Local Agency Formation Commission and Mendocino Council of Governments.
You know, I don't know how those did not get on there. It's probably my mistake, mistake number three. Let's see, I think we should address that.
So we're talking about MCOG and LAFCO and an alternate, yes.
One option, and what I may have done last year, I may have appointed myself as alternate.
Yeah. Is there a board member, and I think it would be Supervisor Kroski, and you know, Supervisor Kroski, I really, one thing about this configuration that I wasn't sure about is it seemed like you were getting a lot of assignments. Now, partly, that's because you requested a lot of assignments, so it's your own fault, but, but because of that, I would tend to maybe appoint myself rather than you to stay on LAFCO as the alternate, because you're already a member of MCOG, that makes a long day for you, so.
That sounds fine, and I don't know that I requested a lot, I think I-
Oh, really? You got more than you asked for?
I think that a lot of these were ones that were previously, just had been open for Third District, and I-
Okay, now, we have a discrepancy in what's coming up on our list here.
We have no alternate for LAFCO or MCOG, yeah.
Okay, so I will put myself in that LAFCO alternate slot, and what about MCOG? I'll ask our-
Well, I'd suggest maybe the same, the chair, that way, each supervisor, other than chair, would be a voting member of either MCOG or LAFCO, and then the chair could be the alternate to both positions, and then-
Who was the alternate last year?
Well, I believe I was.
You were?
As chair.
Okay, okay, well, that works for me. Okay, so I will serve as the alternate on those two bodies. And are there other suggestions? Supervisor Kroski, are there any comments you want, are there any of these committees that-
The only thing I don't list it, and maybe it's not supposed to be on here, but Supervisor Jertie and I are on the North Coast Workforce Alliance. Is that, that's the correct title of it?
It's a brand-new group.
It's a brand-new group.
We were just appointed a couple months ago.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so those are still active. Okay, thank you, Carla. Okay, any other comments on the board assignments? Yes, Supervisor Brown?
And we're looking, "appointments to special assignments," but if you go up to Board Appointments, we will have later on the agenda, appointments to PPFC.
Right. Yes, of course. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we've, you know, added a number of new things over time, and, but before I get to that, I wanted to mention Economic Development and Finance Corporation, McCowen, Kroski, the alternate, there's actually two full members on that, so-
Yeah, that's an error.
So we would strike out alternate.
Yes.
And then, both Sonoma Clean Power and the North Bay North Coast Broadband, those were appointments that were made by the board, so potentially, they could be in this other category, and frankly, I don't imagine making any other appointments than what is shown here, but I guess it would be the preference of the board if we wanted to make those annual chair assignments. But they were appointed by the board, as was the North Coast Workforce Alliance, but again, that could be listed as a chair assignment if there's, if that's what we want to do. But we just, I think, should maybe clarify those.
So it was two, Sonoma Clean Power, and what was the other one?
And the broadband consortium.
Oh, I thought broadband was here.
And obviously, Chair Hamburg is all things broadband.
Yeah, now, we also have the Broadband Alliance of Mendocino County, so does that one belong under special assignments, and you're suggesting the other one would be under chair assignments?
Well, we just need to clarify.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm kind of fine with them being chair assignments, as shown. Sonoma Clean Power, that's maybe in a little more elevated category, potentially, but again, I think it's up to the board.
Board members? Comments? Questions? Preferences?
I'm not completely following what Supervisor McCowen's saying, because I think it's helpful, I just think it's helpful in showing both the board that's being appointed to, and the board member who's being, see the name. If you're talking about the very bottom of the page where it says chair assignments-
No, I'm not talking about those, I was using chair assignments as appointments to the special assignments, that's what I consider the chair assignments, and these ones at the bottom are just ones that fall to the chair. You know, so whoever is chair covers these bottom ones, so I guess this other body would be chair recommendations for special assignments, and that's where there's a couple of them that I was talking about. And I'm fine, it sounds like there's no burning issue one way or the other, so if they remain as, you know, the recommendations of the chair, like they're shown here, I mean, I don't have any real objection, but the Sonoma Clean Power is kind of a, in a bit of a different category, maybe, but if no one has any concern, we could leave it as shown. And then I do have one more, and under the board appointments, it shows the Solid Waste Hearing Body. I actually thought that has always been on the list of the chair's recommendations in the past. And it's also something that's never met in recorded history that I'm aware of.
It's kind of like the North Coast Air Base and Control Council.
Well, perhaps if it's never met, it shouldn't be on the list at all. I don't know what it does, actually. I mean-
Staff could, it may be something that is set by statute, but, you know, possibly, you could direct staff to research the issue, and then, if appropriate, it could either be dropped, or it could be moved down to the chair recommendations. And I think that could be by direction.
Okay. CEO Angelo? Is that okay?
Absolutely, thank you.
Very good. Okay, anything else on this list? Okay, at some point, we need to invite public comment, so I'll do that at this point. Any public comment on the assignments to committees for the board for 2018? Okay, if not, is there a motion from a board member? Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg, I move to adopt the 2018 special assignment roster as presented.
Second, for discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
And I believe we had agreed to strike the word alternate from Economic Development and Finance Corporation, and to add Chair Hamburg as an alternate for LAFCO and MCOG.
Yeah, I should have gone through each one of those.
And I assume the clerk has those changes? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else before we vote? Okay, if not, please vote by the button. Okay, everybody has their marching orders.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now everybody has their marching orders. Okay. Okay, we have a correction to Item 5F.
Yes.
Whereas Will Carson, instead of Paul Zelman, is being appointed to the PPFC. Okay, so this is under Agenda Item Number 5F, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Mendocino County Appointments to the PPFC, pursuant to the memorandum of understanding among the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the National Marine Fisheries Service, and the Sonoma County Water Agency, and the sponsor of this item is the Executive Office.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg, this is standard practice, again, that this item comes to the board during the organizational meeting, and appointments are requested, and there is nothing further than the recommended action here, with the correction, so the, affirm the existing appointment of Supervisor Brown, Mr. Will Carson, and Janet Polly. And I'm not certain if Supervisor Brown would like to make any comments on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown, and then Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, and the comment is that for Russian River Flood Control, Mr. Zelman, he resigned from the board, and the current chair is Mr. Will Carson, and they are now rotating chair and vice-chair every year, so every year, whoever the vice-chair or chair of Russian River Flood Control, their name should be appearing here. And Russian River Flood Control, going back to the preparation of the biological opinion on the Russian River after the listing of fish, this body was created so that information got shared. this body was created so that information got shared. And Russian River Flood Control actually, um, put money into, um, the biological opinion. We all had input. And this PPFC was actually pushed by Mendocino County. So we would have access to the information, um, that was being collected and the studies that were being done. So, anyway, um, that's all for now. Um, it will be meeting, the PPFC will be meeting February 22nd, and that will be in Sonoma County.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor McCowen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm ready to make a motion, but perhaps Supervisor Jordy has a comment first.
I just have a, I just have a simple question. Um, I know that Sean White's been on the Board for a long time. And I just am curious, because I know he went to work for the City of Ukiah. Is he, is he, I hope he's still on, but is he still on the committee?
Um, he attends the meetings.
Okay.
Um, but not the PPFC.
Okay.
Um, but we felt that, uh, because of his new job and, um, he might not have the time actually to serve. But we felt someone with a biology background, like Janet Polly, who has her doctorate, um, was very needed, um, as a position, uh, representing our county. So she actually filled Sean's place.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move the appointment of Supervisor Carrie Brown, Mr. Will Carson, and Ms. Janet Polly as Mendocino County's Representatives to the Public Policy Facilitating Committee.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any, uh, public comment on the motion? Okay, if not, we'll vote by the button, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item 5G is the Discussion and Possible Action, Including Introduction and Way of Reading of Inordinates, Amending Section 3.04071 of Mendocino County Code, Chapter 3.04, Personnel and Salary Setting, the Board of Supervisors' Compensation for Services, Yearly-Based Salary of $85,500. We do have some speakers on this. But before we get to the speakers, I will, um, recognize the Executive Office as the sponsor. I see we also have Heidi Dunham here, uh, from HR.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Hamburg. This item is a follow-up to our last Board Meeting. And, uh, just, just very briefly, it is, uh, by ordinance that, that every two years, the odd year in April, that the CEO brings an item to this Board regarding the Board's salaries. And, uh, I have not done that, you know, since 2009, mainly because of our financial circumstances in the county. And it was clear that, uh, there was, there was not an opportunity, really, to, you know, take a, take a good review of the salaries. Just as all of the positions in this county, we are looking, uh, at the salaries and making every attempt that we can to increase the salary and benefits. And of course, that is for recruitment and retention of good staff. What we have here is the last action that was taken was 2007, when this Board, it was 2007 that the Board received a raise. And then it was shortly thereafter that the Board took a 10% pay cut, just as staff has done. What we know over the last few years is that, under this Board's direction, we're working hard to increase those salaries. And that's, um, it's been incremental, as we know. In looking at the Board's salaries of $61,500 annually and the review that's been done by Human Resources and looking at the average salaries of Supervisors, my recommendation has been and continues to be $85,000 a year for the Supervisors. And of course, um, what we've discussed is salaries ongoing. And so, this is the first reading of the ordinance. I will ask our Human Resources Director, Heidi Dunham, if she has anything else she would like to add.
Um, I just want to remind the Board that, uh, this county is in the middle of a compensation study for all employees. Um, the Board is not included in that compensation study. Uh, the process that we used, um, when looking at the Board's salaries was very similar to the process that, um, that we're using, that the outside contractor is using to look at the salaries of all the employees. So I just wanted to remind you of that. Um, also, um, remind everybody that, um, you have indicated that you would like these salary increases to be tied to the Department Head's salary increases in the future. And the Department Heads since 2009 have received exactly the same as all the other employees in the county. And that's pretty much.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Board comment, Supervisor Brown?
Um, thank you, Chair Hamburg. And I'd like to ask, um, it's that way with all the electeds, correct?
Correct. None of the electeds are, um, included in the, in the compensation study, uh, by the outside agency. And, um, I believe we tied the elected Department Heads to, um, the, the County Department Heads as well.
Okay, any other Board comments? Supervisor McCowen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the phrase, and I'm looking at, uh, the actual ordinance, uh, Section 304071B, the phrase "in the salary provision agreed upon" is pretty vague, uh, in my mind. So, uh, I have some alternate language if the Board is wish, willing to consider it.
Okay, now, again, this is under B? Did you say, or, I'm sorry?
Uh, Section, uh, B of Section 304071B.
Section B, Board of Supervisors' Compensation Shall Be Increased or Decreased as Provided For. Salary Provision-
Hit it louder, please.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm just looking at Section 304071 that was referred to by Supervisor McCowen, which reads, "The Board of Supervisors' Compensation for Services Shall Be Increased or Decreased as Provided For in the Salary Provision Agreed Upon in any future Department Head Association's Memorandum of Understanding." And Supervisor McCowen, if, if you could, would you, um, suggest your wording change that you'd prefer?
Yes, and I would, uh, strike out the phrase "in the salary provision agreed upon." And for discussion, I would suggest inserting, "After, uh, compensation for services shall be increased or decreased." And then I would suggest new language commensurate with "the applicable terms and conditions as provided for." Because it's, it's more than just a, a base salary statement, I believe.
And I just want to ask, uh, Director Dunham, did you, did you copy that? I mean, did you, did you get that?
I didn't prepare the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
County Council.
I'm, I'm sorry. County Council?
So, so if you could just repeat it, just to make sure. So we're taking out "in the salary provision agreed upon."
Well, this is, we're not taking out, we're just suggesting at this point.
And then the new language, uh, it would, after we say, "Compensation for Services Shall Be Increased or Decreased", the suggestion is "commensurate with the applicable terms and conditions as provided for in any future Department Head Association Memorandum of Understanding." And I would also strike the apostrophe S, because I don't think that's part of the title of the MOU.
So, yes, I've got that.
So, repeated it.
Is it, um, yeah, go ahead and repeat it back to us, if you would. So how would 304071 now read in its entirety?
Right, so, so I'm looking at Section B. It would be the Board of Supervisors, take out the apostrophe, "Compensation for Services Shall Be Increased or Decreased as Provided For."
No, no.
No, sorry.
Commensurate with "the applicable terms and conditions."
Sorry. Commensurate with "the applicable terms and conditions as provided for in the salary provision agreed upon." No. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I can't do changes on this machine, so-
What's that?
If you want to read it.
Yeah, I, I, I think I can do a, I could take a stab at this.
Okay, go ahead.
I have paper in front of me, which our Chief Counsel doesn't, so it makes a little bit of a difference.
Great.
"The Board of Supervisors' Compensation for Services Shall Be Increased or Decreased, commensurate with the applicable terms and conditions as provided for in any future Department Head Association Memorandum of Understanding." Did I capture that?
Bingo.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, any Board comment on that suggested language? Or any Staff comment on that suggested language? No? Okay, um, any other Board comment? Then I will ask the public, who would like to address this item to come forward. And we have Sherry Glazer, uh, who would like to speak, followed by Anne Mulgarde and Jennifer Miller. Sherry, please.
Thank you. So, okay, Carmel Angela suggested you give yourselves a raise. And I'm asking, on what merit, other than time? $2,000 more per month brings your salary to $7,000 a month. All of us, who have you been representing, have had a pay cut because of your ineptitude and your inefficiency in passing ordinances and protections. Oukai today is a, is a huge symbol of your failure. I am not rewarded at work for failing. I don't get a raise for that. I got a raise today, I got a raise last month for doing a really good job and bringing in revenue. I got a dollar an hour. So I'm not sure why you're getting a raise and why you would vote yourself a raise. What have you done? What revenue are you bringing this county? What have you done to bring in revenue? Ms. Kroski, you're new to the Board. I don't know why-
Please address the Chair, Ms. Glazer.
Why anyone on this, on this Board of Supervisors would get a raise. Especially after your response to the okai today. I appreciate your response to the fire victims, that you actually discussed it among each other. But as far as the loss of these families for their legal product, you, you were silent, as usual. So, a raise, $24,000 raise, 20% raise, in a time in the county suffering, so many businesses going out of business. I, I work in, uh, in right now, and we don't have people, um, you know, we have very, very little business. Everybody's taking a cut. And that, what you just read said, "an increase or a decrease." And I think it's time for a decrease in your salary. Or it stays the same. $5,000 a month seems efficient, seems enough. Or, maybe you can give that $100,000 that you were going to be getting to firefighters, teachers, mental health. That $100,000 a year could really help people, because I don't feel like that's what you're doing. And I'm going to be, you're going to be seeing letters to the editor, radio ads, all kinds of interviews, fighting this increase in your pay in a time Mendocino County is suffering. And I want to thank you, Mr. Jordy, for being a dissenting voice in this pay raise. Um, yeah. None of us got paid to come here today. You are getting paid. You're always getting paid, whenever you talk to us. And you limit our conversation. You're constantly telling us not to be redundant and repetitive, which you are constantly repetitive and redundant. Even telling us we're constative, constantly repetitive and redundant. Let us speak. Please don't judge us, don't silence us, don't shorten our time. Listen to us and respond to us like you work for us, because you do. We're your boss, and you don't deserve a raise.
Thank you. The next speaker, Jennifer Miller, uh, I think it's Anne Mulgarde.
Slightly different viewpoint. Anne Mulgarde, speaking as a resident of Mendocino County. Um, I'm actually in favor of adjusting the Board's salaries to $85,000. I respect each of you, and my comments are not a reflection of any, of any one of you individually. My point is that without a salary increase, we are narrowing our pool of candidates to people who can afford to run. And I think that it, that is basically undemocratic. Employment research shows that people don't generally leave a job when they have a low salary if they like their job. But the research is also very, very clear that people do not seek out a job that's at a salary they don't think they can afford. So even if you start out, okay, if it slowly gets lower over time, as yours has, you don't leave because of that. But you're not going to be able to recruit anyone into your position. So if the salary is lower than the market at 60 or 70, you're going to attract candidates who can afford to work a demanding 60-hour work week, at least, usually because they have other income. They have other income by property, or by inheritance, or by trust fund, or by whatever other means that they have. But you're not going to be, none of you would end up, over time, being the kind of person who make up most of your employees. Most of your employees need this income and will not be able to pay their rent or mortgage after that next paycheck. Most of your employees are raising children, who are going to be paying Social Security for the rest of us. And so I'm not making individual comments about where any of you come from. I'm just saying that, over time, we are going to have a smaller and smaller pool of candidates. It's hard enough to get a diverse group of people to run for office. But when we cut out the over half of us who have to work in order to support our households, then that group becomes even smaller. And I think that's bad for democracy, and it's, um, and it's bad for your relationship with, with your employees. And I think that when that group becomes too, um, singular, it, uh, it makes for poor decision-making. So I hope you will consider going with the proposed $85,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is Patrick Sullivan, Vice President, SEIU. I'm here reading a brief statement by Court Peterson, the President who could not be here today. My name is Court Peterson. I've been a social worker with Mendocino County for 14 years and employee for just over 19. After recent market salary studies and reclassification actions completed by County HR, incremental raises were provided to custodial staff, some emergency response personnel, and most recently to social workers, to bring them closer to parity with counties having similar demographics. The recent salary grade adjustments for social workers approved by the Board at the November 14th, 2017 meeting was presented to the Board in a manner that suggested that experienced social workers would receive approximately a 15% increase above and beyond the negotiated 6% of the recently approved contract. However, no social worker was assigned at that top salary level, with most of us, myself included, receiving about an 8% increase. While this is genuinely appreciated, this increase combined with our negotiated 6% over two years in annual cash disbursements may eventually result in an approximate 15% increase, but is still below market rate and does not account for increased cost-of-living adjustments that have been conspicuously absent for about eight years. By your actions taken at the Board of Supervisors' Meeting on Monday, December 18th, you have sent a clear and strong signal that Mendocino County has emerged from the devastating impacts of the Great Recession. If my information is correct, you have voted to increase Supervisor salaries by 39%. In determining a salary that reasonably compensates Supervisors, the county performed a market study analyzing the rates provided by comparable counties ranging from Nevada to Lake to Sonoma. As you know, the employees of Mendocino County saw their wages slashed in 2009 and have yet to recover and catch up to what they were earning at that time. The county administration continues to struggle with recruiting and retaining qualified staff because of the wide disparities in the pay rates offered here in Mendocino compared to the counties you listed to determine a fair salary for yourselves. With this in mind, we call on the Board of Supervisors to direct Human Resources staff use the same logic and process for all of its employees that is decided to use for itself. The county is currently engaged in a classification and compensation study that will provide valuable information on where Mendocino County stands regarding equitable pay for specific classifications. We call on the Board to take swift action on this report to help stabilize the county staff and to show employees that they are valued and appreciated for the important work they do to keep the county operating. Respectfully submitted, Court Peterson, President, Mendocino County, Chapter, SEIU, 1021. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Jennifer Miller, followed by Tracy Peller.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, Ms. Angelo. I wanted to just be a little personal today. I've been with the county for 18 years. I'm 62 years old. I'm going to retire in a couple more years. This year, I'm going to celebrate my 35th wedding anniversary. I drive a 32-year-old car. I don't need a whole lot in my life, but I need a decent wage. I'm the only breadwinner in my home. My net income per month is $2,170. I wear glasses now because I can't afford contacts. My heater in my house is broken, and I can't repair it. My wood stove broke. I can't replace it. I have two electric heaters in my home. This is really hard for me. I can't afford a lot of things. I couldn't afford Christmas presents. I couldn't participate in the gift exchange program at work. I can't afford it. I had surgery, major surgery, on my foot in June. I can't afford the right shoes I need. The issue that I have, I thought about it yesterday. I can't afford the gas to come here, but I can't afford not to be here and tell you how much that salary impact mean personally. You need to be attached, connected, and be a part of the, the salary negotiations that are coming up. Please recognize that. I've worked with Family and Children's Services for over 13 years. I care about the families and my children of this county. I ask you to please care about your employees. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, I believe. Tracy Peller.
You can pull that down.
Yes, please pull the mic down.
Hey, guys. I left all my stuff in the car, so this is kind of on the wing, but everything she said, wow, and that's, that's the first of it. I, for the record, I am Tracy Peller. I 100 million percent disagree with this pay increase for the supervisors right at this time. The timing couldn't be worse. It's too much, too fast, too soon, and I'm an activist. I do this for free to show up for our community, not saying that what I do and what you do are in the same situation, but you're representatives for the people, by the people. It's a different deal to take care of people like you do. I don't understand, I don't understand why we have a CEO. I don't understand why we're not a team vision, sustainable Mendocino, and that we're all embracing each other with a huge wildlife and cannabis and wineries and cheeses and honeys and beautiful things, because that's what we're made out of. So, instead of a pay increase, I suggest just more getting together, going on the same page, I don't know, but this is more, going to be a more divisive action. The people are upset, they got hurt feelings, they don't understand it. So again, this is just not the time with the place. Let's take care of our own. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to address the board on item 5G?
Ron Edwards, Willets, California. I want to start out with kind of how I run my business and how I got things in the corporate world of when an employee came and said, "I need a raise," and it was like, "Well, why do you need a raise?" And they said, "Well, because I can't afford my bills, I can't afford this." And I said, "Well, we are a business here. What have you done for the company to deserve that increase? What is this increase going to do for your performance?" So, I am not going to oppose it, but I'm saying that if you do get this raise, I certainly will be here holding you accountable to see that you are putting in that much more effort, that much more time for that money. I have to agree with the previous speaker about running for supervisors. I considered it, but when I looked at $65,000 a year, there's no way. 85, yeah, I'm looking at it. So, that can help, but I please, and I'm saying with this raise, I want to see 39% more participation, I want to see 39% more results, and I want to see issues resolved, not just passed along. Thank you.
I believe we have another speaker. Please come forward.
Hello, Monique Ramirez, District 3. I do support a pay increase for your salaries, but I don't know that it needs to be all the way to 39% increase, and I do question the process of how that is decided, that you guys get to decide for yourselves what your pay increase or decrease is. It almost seems to me like the public should have some sort of say in that, because what if you were all really corrupt and you were like, "We want 200,000," and you all voted for it, and we'd be sitting back here being like, "Okay," and so I'm just questioning that part of it. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Casey O'Neill?
Casey O'Neill, local farmer. I just wanted to say that I gave serious thought in the past few months to the possibility of running for a supervisory position, and I think it is probably the most, it is an exceptionally difficult job, and I don't know that I would be ready or capable to even do so, and so I just wanted to thank you all for your work, because I think it's, I think there's a lot that goes with it, and it's not easy trying to balance all of the different needs of different constituencies, so, thank you.
Good morning. Happy New Year. I'm sure that yours will be a new year if you vote for this raise for yourself.
Your name for the record.
My name is Bobby Brumback. I'm in the 3rd District. Thank you for representing us.
Did you get that, Carla? Did you get a name? Could you just say your name again?
Sure. Bobby Brumback, B-R-U-M-B-A-C-K. I'm in 3rd District. Thank you again. So it'll be a great new year for you if you give yourself this raise. 39.7%, actually, $24,300 a year. Even Congress only gives themselves $20,000 a year. It's a little bit high. I don't know if you quite need almost 40% raise. I propose that you do what you did, I'm a county employee, I've been with the county for 29 years. I propose that you do what you did for us, which was, you took your 10% cut like we did, so I think that you should give yourself a 3% raise, plus a $1,000 taxable check, and then the next year, give yourself 2.5% and another $1,000 taxable check, and then bargain with the county employee, or with the county residents for your future salaries. But I think almost 40% is a little bit high, and I don't think that whatever service you're going to give us after you get that raise is going to justify that much of an increase. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers who would like to come forward? Please come to the microphone and give your name for the record.
Hi. My name is Patrice Byerly. I'm also a resident of 3rd District. I'd like to thank the board for all their fine work, especially Supervisor Kroski for coming and visiting us and hearing our concerns. I'd like to express support also for your raise. I think it's a difficult job. I think that having more money would help you do your job better, because I feel that our end of the county is not well-represented. I also feel that the county employees, from what they've said today, are not represented, and I'd like to see you do that better, and this is how we do it in Leightonville. That's what I'd like to see from the board.
Okay, are there any other speakers? Okay, thank you very much. Bring this back to the board. Supervisors, who would like to lead off the discussion? We have a first introduction and waving a reading of an ordinance before us. Don't all jump at once. Supervisor Jurdie.
One of the speakers said that this wasn't the right time. Unfortunately, I think that would be a comment the board would hear at any time it came up, and that's, in fact, probably why it has not come up in 11 years. I voted against the resolution that set this ordinance on today's agenda, because I personally feel why, I feel the $85,500 is, is logical, it's justifiable, it's, it's proportionate within the salaries of other county employees in the organization when you look at the responsibility, but I voted against it because, as we know, the typical county employee, which is not every employee, but the typical is paid about 18% below their, their counterparts in comparable counties, and so, but I also want the board and the, and the public to know that I'm not going to be a hypocrite and vote against it and then take the salary, which I believe two former county supervisors did years ago. I know that's not the case of any of the current supervisors, and so if I'm, I voted against the resolution, I'll be voting against the ordinance, but I have given a memo to, or emailed to staff, asking that they set my salary at 18% below the market, because that's where the other county employees are.
Thank you, Supervisor Jurdie. Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chair. I think that I really liked Court Peterson's letter, and I think that he stated it that, you know, this is a clear message, and I think there is a clear message that we do value our employees and that, that includes the board. I think that we do need to be paying our employees more. There's no doubt about it. I think that we have started to rectify that, and we will continue to rectify that, but I don't see the, the vote to increase our salary as us saying none of the other employees matter. I think we all do work for the county. We are trying to take everything into account, so I guess I just want to make sure that the employees understand that this is not us saying that the other employees don't matter. I think that we want to pay everybody more, and we are going to continue to try to increase salaries yearly. So with that, I am ready to make a motion if there's no other comments.
Well, I'd be glad to take a motion. You can always put a motion on the floor.
I would like--
Go ahead.
So I would like to introduce and we have the reading of an ordinance, ending section 3.04-071 of the Mendocino County Code, Chapter 3.04, Personnel and Salary, Setting the Board of Supervisors' Compensation for Services, Yearly-Based Salary, at $85,500. Directing the clerk of the board to notice said ordinance in the media of general circulation following standard noticing requirements, and returning the ordinance to the Board of Supervisors' adoption on January 9, 2018.
I'm sorry, Carla.
Can you confirm Supervisor Kroski whether that is incorporating Supervisor McCowen's suggested changes?
Yes, incorporating the changes made by Supervisor McCowen.
Okay, we do have a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Kroski and a second by Supervisor McCowen, and we have a comment from Supervisor Brown.
Yes, I'd like to ask County Council, Supervisor Jurdie has already said he's going to be voting against this. What vote? Is it a four-fifths vote?
I believe it's a majority.
It's a majority.
Majority vote. Further comments? Supervisor McCowen?
I would, first, I appreciate all the comments by the speakers who spoke against the raise and the speakers who spoke in favor of it. I think every point of view expressed has validity to it. One thing that is very clear here, the Board of Supervisors are in the unique position of being able to approve our own salary, and that is a function of state law. And there are a number of other things that are unique about the position. My understanding, any new employee for the county is hired at a particular pay, and then that pay is increased 5% every year for five years. That doesn't happen with the Board of Supervisors. There are other unique things, like we're free to work as many hours as we wish. If we were to work a 40-hour week, it'd be a significant reduction in the workload for each of us. It's, you know, a light week is 50 or 60 hours, some, it's not that hard to work 80 hours. You know, I don't, we all signed up for this job. We ran for this job, we campaigned for it, so we're here doing the job that, that we want to do, and it's, it's uncomfortable to be setting your own pay, but again, that's the way the law provides for it, and the pay, when I took the job, and Supervisor Brown as well, was $68,000. From day one, we voluntarily took a 10% pay cut, and--
And then made it permanent.
And then made it permanent as soon as there were the votes to do it, and it's very unfortunate that some of our colleagues weren't willing to set that example as well. That was a very unfortunate situation, but, you know, we've gotten beyond that. We've worked to solidify the financial condition of the county, to generate new revenue by promoting responsible economic development, and another thing a lot of people don't realize, the money that comes into the county that we have discretion over, that provides the services that people rely on, that doesn't have strings attached to it, is revenue generated locally. So it's from local property tax and sales tax, transin occupancy tax, and fees for services. That's our only source of local revenue. So unfortunately, Mendocino County does tend to be a relatively poor rural county compared to some of our neighbors, and I do believe that our employees do understand that, within the limits of what we have available and maintaining fiscal solvency for the county, we are doing everything we reasonably can to improve employee compensation and retention, and there's a long way to go, but I believe we're all committed to doing that.
Thank you, Supervisor McCowen. And any other comments? Yeah, I just want to say that, that I agree with all the comments that have been made, including those by Supervisor Jurdie. I totally understand where you're coming from, Supervisor Jurdie, and I understand where those of you in the audience who spoke in opposition to this and who spoke in sort of wariness of this, I understand how you feel totally. Like several of the board members, I ran for a job that paid $68,000. For the last seven years, I've been paid 61. Yeah, that was, you know, that was something that the Board of Supervisors set in motion, and we've agreed to, as Supervisor McCowen pointed out, we do not get step increases, we do not get, when bonuses are given to county employees, the Board of Supervisors is not included in bonuses. The Board of Supervisors has had static pay for 11 years, and I imagine if this pay raise is enacted, it may be another 11 years before the board enacts another pay raise, because these don't tend to happen very often, for obvious reasons. The main thing for me, though, as I leave the Board of Supervisors, is I would very much like to see a contingent of individuals come forward who are willing to run for this job, and as Supervisor McCowen pointed out, this is not a typical 40-hour-a-week job. It's more like you're on call at least 24/7, and, and you've got to be, you know, it's a job that takes a lot of commitment. A lot of people do not want to do it for what is not enough pay to support their family, particularly if you have, if you have a mortgage, if you're putting kids through college, if you're doing some of those things. It's, it's not very easily done on the, the current salary, and I think we would be establishing a salary where that would become more, more reasonable for people. So, I want to see more people come forward. When I ran for reelection, there were zero candidates running against me. I know I'm a fabulous supervisor, but that's not the only reason there were no other candidates, and we've seen that in the 4th District, we've seen something sort of like that in the 2nd District, although Supervisor McCowen has had-- McCowen has had opposition, but it has not been really serious opposition. It's happened in Supervisor Brown's district. And I know we're all fabulous supervisors, but the fact that there's no one who's willing to come forward and compete for these jobs has something to do with the salary. And Mr. Edwards pointed that out and I think it's fairly obvious. So it is really important that the people who occupy these chairs have the commitment and some knowledge, I think, some knowledge going into it of what it's all about, what it entails and what it requires in terms of your loss of your personal space. So I'm going to vote in favor of this. The voters will not be able to take it out on me next time around. And, but I'm sure, and this was brought up by another speaker, you know, when do the people get to speak? Well, the people get to speak at the ballot box every four years and they get to throw the bums out if they don't like what they're doing. And, you know, for supervisors who vote their own pay raises, they, you know, they can face that retribution. What I'm hoping to face, what I'm hoping to see is several capable candidates come forward to run for my position. So with that, are there any other comments by board members? Supervisor Kroski?
Thank you Chair. And I just really want to second what you have to say. I think this pay raise will not affect me very much since I don't have that much more time. But I am voting for this for the long term. I do hope we have really good representation for the third district that comes out of this. And I think a lot of people here are from the third district that are voicing their opposition and I understand it. But I do really want a good candidate and I think multiple good candidates for the third district to choose from to carry on. So I think it is easier for me to vote because again, I won't be facing reelection and for me, this is just going to have an effect for part of a year, but I think it'll have a big impact for the future of the third district.
Thank you Supervisor Kroski. Any other comments by board members? If not, we will vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Oops. Okay, we will vote again by the button.
Motion carries with Supervisor Jurdie dissenting.
Yeah, I thought, wow, I'm even better than I thought. Okay, moving right along to item five H, introduction wave reading of an ordinance delegating authority to invest or reinvest the funds of the county and its other depositors in the county treasury to the treasurer for calendar year twenty eighteen. And I see our esteemed treasurer is coming forward. Ms. Schatmeyer.
Happy New Year, Chair Hamburg. Members of the board, Sherry Schatmeyer, treasure tax collector. As a direct result of the Orange County investment problems that led to their bankruptcy, it is mandated that the board delegate the authority to invest and reinvest the funds of the county and its other depositors on an annual basis. So this has been happening now for twenty years and I'm just recommending that the board adopt the ordinance that's in your packet and delegating that authority to the treasurer for the calendar year twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you very much, Sherry. And board comment Supervisor Brown?
I was just going to say, I remember it well. I was in Orange County.
Oh, wow.
When the whole thing blew up, which was pretty amazing to me.
Yes.
Considered Orange County a very conservative.
Mm-hmm. Their treasure, it was all their county treasure.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the recommended motion.
Okay Supervisor McCowen makes the motion. Do we have a second? Supervisor Brown seconds the motion. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote by the button.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have a Transportation Director's Report, I believe, although I didn't see Any comments by the board on the Transportation Director's Report? Okay, I don't see any comment by the board members. Any public comment? Okay, hearing, I'm sorry Supervisor Brown?
Well, I should say something. The Redwood Valley MAC discussed concerns they have about the road linings, you know, stop ahead, where you stop, the lines on the road, fog lines as well, and has submitted a letter. So I need, not a letter, but an email listing everything. So I need to get that to Mr. DeShiel. But I thought I'd mention it since they took the time to write it up and submit it.
Any other comments? I see no public comments. We will accept the Transportation Director's Report by order of the chair and move on to the Chief Executive Officer's Report.
Chair Hamburg, there is no CEO report today and there is also no update on ledge today as well.
I'm sorry Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. I would like to say something on legislation.
Go ahead.
Our General Government Committee needs to get going on the legislative platform. Usually, we have passed that by now and we haven't. Our first meeting, I think, is the twelfth of February. So any recommendations from any of you should come in and we probably need to start on that process in notifying department heads about any legislation or issues that they're aware of. So if we can start getting that rolling, it'd be great.
Okay, when do we usually adopt the ledge platform?
We usually adopt it the end of the year because we want to be ready, especially when there's a two-year session and, you know, beginning the first year.
So what is our goal this year? To get it adopted by?
It'll have to be sometime in February. And it really hasn't changed that much, I don't think. Because we are for at least Sacramento in the second year of a session. And so not much has changed, but we'll get that out as soon as we can.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Chair Hamburg, I would just like to make one comment on that, what Supervisor Brown is saying. The one issue that we are working on actually as a region with the other three counties is really around recovery. So I will be certain Supervisor Brown, that you have all of that information to put into the legislative platform. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, the next and actually the last item on our agenda is Supervisor Reports. And I don't know who has them, but we will just go around the dais and start with Supervisor Jurdie.
Just quickly, I just wanted to palpably thank the Department of Transportation crew in Fort Bragg. Recently was traveling, looking at county roads in the fourth district with Kent Stanley Supervisors, the different corporation yards and they were doing some great work while we were out, well, before and after, obviously, we were out there cleaning up drainage issues that will be helpful as the rains come.
Thank you Supervisor Jurdie. Supervisor McCowen?
I would just mention that the North Coast Railroad Authority will be making a presentation to the California Transportation Commission in the next month or so at their request. There is a false impression that NCRRA is supported by millions of dollars of tax funds annually. That is absolutely not the case. The entire line from Lombard and Napa County, where it connects to the National Rail Network, to and around Humboldt Bay was shut down in nineteen ninety-eight due to storm damage. The line was partially reopened to Windsor, about sixty miles for freight. That reopening was as a result of significant public investment of about sixty million dollars. Those are the last public dollars that have come to NCRRA. That was about two thousand and six that that funding was approved. The line reopened in July twenty-eleven to Windsor, under attack by two Humboldt County environmental groups. Since that time, significant resources have been spent by all parties litigating the issues related to that lawsuit. They claim the lawsuit's necessary to prevent NCRRA advancing into the Eel River Canyon, which is ludicrous, given that it would take about a billion dollars to restore the line through the Eel River Canyon. There's no economic justification for doing so. I believe it is economically viable to restore the line certainly to Ukiah, Redwood Valley and Willets. And there are opportunities around the Humboldt Bay area for local passenger excursion or freight rail. And that is the focus. But so, NCRRA is in a position that we are going to begin making the case to the public as well as the California Transportation Commission, that the original purposes for which the rail line was preserved are still valid and that it is appropriate to have a public investment to make sure that NCRRA can complete its mission. So we'll be hearing more about that going forward.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I first of all want to apologize to all of you in the listening public with my coughing. I may miss the October meeting, but I'm not going to miss today's meeting. But I was given, the dates are January nineteenth through the twenty-first, a packet of information and I believe Supervisor Hamburg also received one from Mr. Luke Frye. And it is tools for managing change and scarcity in the aftermath of the fires. And so it's a program that's going to be going on. I'm not sure the executive office is aware, but I want to share this information with them and I wanted to publicly announce it because it looks, after going over the material, it looks like it could be a very excellent program, educational program for everyone that's been a fire victim. I also would like to announce that the Potter Valley Irrigation District, on January tenth, six o'clock at the school multipurpose room, will be doing a program educational for the community about the Potter Valley Project and its value to Potter Valley Irrigation District as well as the rest of Ukiah Valley, all the way down to, well, it goes well beyond our own political borders, Sonoma and Marin County. But it will be an educational program. It will also be giving information about the relicensing with FERC and what that process entails. So it is educational. I encourage any one of you to also attend. I will be in attendance that evening. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Kroski?
Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know, I will be meeting with members of the Mobile Home Park in Willets later this week. Just so you're all aware, there are still continued issues with rising rental prices there. So, you know, this continues to be a problem and I think it's spreading to more than just the Mobile Home Park in Willets. But I just wanted to let you make sure that you're all aware that it is a problem. I will be meeting with them. We'll see what happens.
Very good. I have an announce, well, not an announcement, actually, I have a referral to make. I was informed by Director of, I can't remember your title. Anne, what is your title? Direct Coordinator of Services?
Now it's Acting Director.
Excuse me, Acting Director of HHSA and Mulgarde. Sorry. That HHSA is implementing a large complex grant called Whole Person Care. And Ms. Mulgarde is asking that we refer, or that I refer this matter to the General Government Standing Committee. And I would like to take that action by order of the chair. There's no objection? Very good. And I'm going to be going down to Santa Rosa for a meeting with Homeland Security. I believe this is actually President Donald Trump's appointee. Don't shake your head, Lee. He's President of the United States. President Donald Trump's designee as the Director of Homeland Security and this is a multi-county meeting to discuss recovery from the recent wildfires. Also this week is the regular Board of Directors meeting of Sonoma Clean Power. I'll be at that meeting on Thursday. One of the topics of, well, there's several topics to discuss, but one of them is fire recovery and funds that are being put forward by Sonoma Clean Power to help with fire recovery in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. So we'll be discussing that. And Supervisor McCowen, you have a comment?
After your report.
No, that's basically it.
So the referral requested by Ms. Mulgarde was not clear to me and I wonder if we could invite her up to state the request. Because on the face of it, Health and Human Services would tend to go to Public Health, Safety and Resources.
Oh, you know, you're probably right. I always think of that as a safety committee, but go ahead.
I have no issue with wherever it is sent. I just know that because of its complexity, there'll be some late contracts, there'll be some large contracts, there'll be scuttlebutt, especially in the mental health community about what's this Whole Person Care? How is it helping? How does it interface with our new measure B? And so that's why I wanted to make sure that at least a couple of you on a subcommittee were more fully informed about the issues. But where it goes is probably a matter of your historical placement of Health and Human Services issues.
Okay, well then, based on that request, I will redirect this to the Public Health, Safety and Resources Standing Committee. Supervisor McCowen?
Well frankly, based on the comments.
You'd rather have it in General Government?
No, it sounds like we should have an agenda item before the full board if we really want people to be informed. Is there?
You know, my fear is that it's going to be so, one of the ways that I like to use your committees is to give you the hour-long report so that you can tell me what are the fifteen minutes you think that the full board needs to hear. So I'm welcome to get that feedback from my supervisor, Carmel Angelo, or any other way, but just kind of feeling our way here.
Well, so then maybe based on that comment, the referral to the Standing Committee, but we would anticipate a future agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. Supervisor Brown?
And I think that makes a lot of sense because I think there'll be a lot of questions asked and what have you and I think to have it better focused when it comes before the board at a board session.
Just imagine the two-hour presentation I could give to the board and that'll really make you want to put it in a Standing Committee.
Okay, so we have referred this item of the Whole Person Care Grant from HHSA to the Public Health, Safety and Resources Committee rather than to General Government. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. And I would like to ask a question of my colleagues I forgot to do. It was right here in my stack of information. But I received a letter and a card and it's about joining the North Bay rebuild or recovery, I forget just exactly what they call it, and I didn't bring the letter with me. But it's Kenwood Investments out of Sonoma, but it's the North Bay Recovery and they're asking county supervisors to come on. I didn't know if anyone else got a letter like that.
I got that one as well.
Did you?
I did not respond to it.
I also wasn't sure. I'm just not sure, but none of you have heard of that?
Have you heard of it? No? Okay, well, if you look into it further and you want to bring it back, that's your prerogative, certainly. Okay, is there any other business to come before the board this morning? Mr. Howard, you have a comment?
Not exactly in regular order. I know it isn't regular order. I just want to let you know that I had lengthy discussions since I was stood here last with the Corps. And the Corps is, it's in the contract that those areas be drawn. I met with Mr. Nash Gonzalez and got ahold of our own people, Chris and George Rowe. Absolutely not advisable to be doing those. The problem is, there's seven sites out there right now that are waiting. The problem is, there's seven sites out there right now that are waiting for straw to be put on them. I hope that it is taken care of and we're not having this discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Yes.
Chair Hamburg, thank you for recognizing me here. I just want to make the comment that if it isn't taken care of by Friday, it will be, because we have really, we get a really good response from CalOES and FEMA. And remember, it's CalOES that works with FEMA. FEMA works with the Army Corps. They've got the contracts. But when you go to the hierarchy, it really is CalOES and FEMA that are making the decisions. So, we'll work through this.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you, Lee. If there's no other business to come before the Board, we will be adjourned, and our next meeting is on Tuesday, January 9th, 9:00 a.m. Thank you very much.